Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, February 7th regular City Council meeting in the city of Belle Beach. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the Constitution. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to, I'm going to have him introduce himself a little bit later, but the distinguished gentleman here sitting next to Lynn Reeves is Andrew Solzman. He's our city attorney. He's standing in right now, and we appreciate you being here, Andrew. In a couple of seconds, I'll just give you a chance to introduce yourself when we come to the city attorney's spots. Okay? Thank you. Okay, so first item of business is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Glenn Gunn. A second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Notaro. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Frank Banker.
I don't think my mic's working.
Oh, here.
My mic's been trying, so. Anyway, I requested, I submitted a resolution back in December. I missed the, uh, a couple of days or two, and I submitted it again. I asked for a work session. It is moving. I want to say is I don't feel the agenda's broken.
Is the, is the resolution made at this point? Is it drafted?
I submitted it, can I, to our, uh, Dwight Riley, uh, White Town.
Madam Clerk. Yeah, Frank's mic is not working. That's why you can't do it. Slide to the other seat, Frank.
I know that the city manager and city attorney Riley did discuss that, so.
City manager?
Yeah. Fred, Fred and I met, but we could go last Friday, and of course, everyone knows he's going through some things. Uh, he, uh, looked at it, and he thought it needed to be, uh, an ordinance instead of a resolution because it's changing, uh, addressing city council. So he wa, he, he does have it. It's just, uh, he's kind of been detained the last few days. He's, he's looking at that plus Section 94. He's going to finish those things up, or he already told me that.
Well, the, the resolution was clearly just, was for, when our citizens address council, instead of council having to vote whether we can address them back, resolution would just give us the opportunity under our free speech to address the citizens. Lots of times these citizens have to stand here, or stay here all night long until council, you know, interacts with them or gives comments. So they'd be like, hey, let's write, write to the people. Now, I've, I've heard like some people say it might take all night to get to do it, but if you serve on council, then you should stay here. But I don't know why it would have to be a resolution. Or I mean, I don't know why it would have to be an ordinance.
I think, and I haven't seen your resolution, but I think if I understand what you just said correctly, um, right now in our ordinance, it prohibits us to have a back and forth that I love with citizens. So to change an ordinance, you have to use a nullification of the ordinance. So it's an ordinance change, which means one vote, publication, one vote, publication, add in a newspaper, and then a second vote, and that's when it's actually charged. Yeah. But what we can do, I mean, this should be addressed by, you know, we, I don't want it to just be tabled for, you know, or not forever. So if we can get this addressed, in the meantime, you can make a motion tonight to dispense with the rules of, uh, we will agree with that. I don't see a problem with having a back and forth. So I'll limit the back and forth, so we're not going to go on all night long. I mean, you have three minutes when you're up here, so it'll be, you know, a reasonable discussion, but we can't have, you know, a back and forth.
No, I agree. Okay.
Suggestion, rather than change the agenda, why don't you bring it up in comments or unfinished business?
Right. That's what, yeah, we will, and then, because we're not going to be able to, because I was just saying, I think it does require an ordinance change.
I agree.
Yeah, so we're not going to be able to do it via resolution, and I don't have a problem if we get it on a resolution on the call, anybody else.
Is there, I don't see that, yeah.
Any other comments on the agenda? All right, welcome, Robyn. Six oh five, Robyn Aki's present now. Um, all right, so any other comments on the agenda? Citizens, any comments? Council? All in favor of approving the agenda as is? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? This passes, um, we have six people here, six to zero. Next comes citizens' comments. Each person may come up and address the council on any item that is not on our agenda. If it's on our agenda, I'll call you later to speak on that item. When you come up, please come right up here to the podium, give us your name and address, and please observe the rules of conduct. They're on that podium, and they're all around, in a nutshell, basically, just speaking in a nice civil manner, and that's the kind of reception you get back. Would that, does anybody like to, uh, would anybody like to speak with council? Deborah Mall.
I'm Debbie Mall. I live at 115 Cosway Boulevard. It's not really addressing council, so to speak, but I just wanted to commend Patty on her handling of all of the paperwork for the election and things. Um, she's, I think, done a fabulous job, and she just gets things out so quickly, and I know that's part of her job, but it's not part of her everyday job, and so it's on top of what she has to do every day. So I just, on behalf of hopefully all the citizens of Belle Beach, I just wanted to say thank you to Patty.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty. Other citizen comments? There would be no others. I'm going to close citizen comments at this time. We have the presentation by the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. We have law enforcement and code enforcement. I see we have two deputies here, so deputy.
Mayor, do you want law enforcement?
Sergeant.
Code enforcement.
I'm sorry?
Do you want law enforcement or code enforcement first?
They both were good for the month, I think, so.
I think they were. So I'm switching to Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. The analysis that I'm going to present is going to be for the month of December 2021. It looks like of the UCR reporting crimes, we only had one assault, which through my research was a domestic-related incident. Uh, there were a total of nine people arrested in there, uh, for that month, and most of those arrests came from traffic-related stops. Of the deputy activity leading that were 195 traffic stops, directed patrols throughout the city of 116 for the month, and traffic control of 52. There were five crashes in the city, and the majority looked like they were right here at the intersection of Gulf and Cosway and somewhere on the bridge. And then there were a total of 243 citations and warnings issued, and I had to break down here. I went ahead and took a look at that. Of the 243, two were boating citations. There were 24 traffic citations issued, 22 parking citations, and the rest were warnings of a total of 195 warnings. And that's all I have.
Sergeant, um, we've been speaking quite a bit, and I know Frank Banker's taken personal interest on the whole safety issue. Do you know anything about those boating incidents?
I don't. I was assigned to a marine unit back in the early 2000s, and a lot of it is just traffic, or boating safety enforcement out there, usually the intercoastal waterway, just looking for, uh, safety inspections, whatnot, obviously. Speed zone violations, wake zone violations, maybe fishing license violations, et cetera.
Well, this is another excellent month, and congratulations to anyone who patrol here and all the citizens who keep their eyes open. Um, I did note that today, just came through the sheriff, they have, the county has reporting where you can sign up for it, any citizen can, and I noticed there was two burglaries that were out in Gulf Boulevard area. So I'm just guessing, it's probably the same old routine stuff where people are going in cars, so I don't know if you're seeing any more of the, you know, lifts, you know what I call them, the lift-ups or whatever, where people are lifting up the handles and stuff, but, um, I don't know if you have any tips for us over here, but I did notice just two in one week here.
Well, Brad, I'm glad that you brought that up. It actually happened on the same night, and the deputy on this shift is the one that actually went and investigated the call. As usual, it's the doors that were left unlocked, so the reason I'm glad you brought that up is because I was coming to him, I was going to just see if we could remind everybody to make sure that they lock their doors.
Heard it from the sergeant folks, lock your doors. Council, any questions, comments? Citizens, any questions or comments? Thank you. Appreciate it. Code enforcement?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members, staff, citizens, Deputy Clacke for the record, just, uh, want to do a quick review of what's been going on for the last 30 days. Uh, myself and the city manager have been working very diligently on, uh, a lot of contractors working in the city without permits, and as of today, when I came in, I had 17. As of right now, it's now 19 because I got two more the, the Saturday noon, where people were actually not pulling permits, or hired contractors that are not licensed, uh, coming in, uh, doing the work, and then, of course, nothing's coming through the city, so we, we don't see anything, or the city doesn't see anything. Um, the, um, but we, we did have one incident last Thursday where, uh, a resident hired electrician come in, replace a panel in a house, um, and, uh, was not licensed, was not a licensed contractor, was not insured, and, uh, at night third this morning, got a phone call from the resident, and she told me that she had a house fire, it was electrical. Thank God it was, not because of what the electrician did, but because of a couple squirrels, I guess, decided to shoo uninsulated wire, but, uh, they, they were very appreciative that we are looking into, to these, these, uh, these issues. And, and again, it's just mainly for the, the, the safety of the residents of the city, and, um, like I said, it's my second month doing this, and as of, like, right now, like I said, we have 19 of them that we, I've caught, and, uh, I want to thank this, the, uh, Pinellas County Building Department License Bureau, because they have been working with me in finding these individuals. In fact, the individual on Thursday got a $2,500 fine for not having the proper permit, so. Uh, other than that, just some, uh, other small little issues as far as, um, uh, minor ordinances that were taken care of and, and doing the education over the enforcement part of it, and everybody's pretty much compliant.
I did notice a lot more of that, um, you know, with the contractors and, and you're finding that, so that's excellent. Um, two questions. How's the reception that you're getting? I know Danny was quite popular, and you're new. How's things going out there?
I, I will tell you that everybody that I meet is just happy, you know, they, yeah, they were sorry to see Danny go, but I haven't had any complaints from anybody yet, so.
And we have been, and it might be too new at this point to even say something, but we had, we have increased the enforcement hours to about 20 per week at the recommendation of the city manager. How are you finding that 20? Is it just right, too much, too little?
It, it's, it's sufficient. I mean, there are some days, again, when I, like, I was out last Sunday, or this past Sunday, um, and did catch a couple of people working that works most too, uh, but during the week, it's, um, it does keep me busy because I do adjust the hours, so I come out at different times of the day, uh, but 20 hours is sufficient.
Good. Council, one more.
Just my kudos to the new sheriff in town here. I'll tell you, within two months, he's changed the face of code enforcement in the city. He brings a lot of experience in the permanent area, and, uh, look forward to working with you, and hopefully we can put a lot more spotlight on the after hours and the weekend stuff as well.
Thank you. And again, I, I'm learning a lot from, like I said, from the county, and, uh, I really, I'm telling you, I enjoy doing this. This is a, a different aspect of law enforcement, and I'm having a good time doing it.
Citizens, any comments for code enforcement? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, uh, thank you. See you tomorrow.
Item four is our quarterly board reports. Um, we're only going to have one tonight because the Board of Adjustment has no report, the Planning and Zoning has no report, Park and Recreation, Tammy Lavenda had a personal issue, she's not going to be able to be here tonight. I don't think there's any replacement person who came in short notice, right, Patty? No. So just Citizen Advisory Committee, do we have someone here? Ron?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Ron Seganek, Chair of Citizen Advisory Committee. So we've had, uh, three meetings here, uh, beginning November 16th. Uh, we met to discuss capital project budget items regarding the Gulf Boulevard undergrounding, as well as the American Rescue Plan Act funding and the recommendations for that. On December 8th, we met to review the digital sign ordinance, and then we had a citizen raise a matter, uh, with concerns over the height of, uh, hedges, walls, and fences, and we agreed to talk about that in our next meeting. So then on January 20th, we met to review, um, the, the citizens' concern, and, um, we are in the process of, uh, making recommendations on, on that, and that was a visual bottom slope 20 years ago. The height limit was four feet, back to your setback, which is 25 feet from the seawall, uh, waterfront properties, and then that code was changed, um, to where it can now be eight feet, and it's only four feet high, uh, from five feet from the seawall. And so the panoramic vista that this gentleman had on the bottom slope is no longer there, so we're working on some recommendations there. And then we also, on that January 20th meeting, began a review of the side ordinance that , um, city council tabled the night before, and so we're working with the city manager to, uh, compare, you know, the primary issue is around, uh, how do we protect, uh, constitutional rights, First Amendment, around, uh, legal size, that was the main issue. So those are the, the big topics that we've worked on. Any questions?
Let's find out. Council, any questions? Citizens, we have any questions? Thank you. Thanks for the hard work on this. We're looking forward to some of those reports. At this point, we would have the city, and I've implied that the city attorney's report, as I said, I'm going to have, um, Attorney Solzman here to take some time and just introduce himself to everyone. Uh, we know you from the last time you were here, but welcome to some new folks here and quite a few citizens, so if you could just take the floor, Andrew, and tell us what you want to tell us.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Say your mic is on, though.
Certainly sorry, the circumstances that I'm here. Um, I feel terrible, uh, to be in this situation for, for Attorney Riley. Um, I'm happy to help assist the city any way I can. Uh, I have spoken to some of you before. I've practiced law in Pinellas County for 35 years, the last 30 roughly in municipal labor employment. Uh, some of the issues that you've talked about, signs, um, changes in ordinances and resolutions, I'm very familiar with and have been doing it for a long time. I certainly, uh, am happy to help in the way I can. I, right now, sit as the city attorney for Gulfport, um, so we have similar, some similar issues that you've all had, but I had served for Indian Rocks Beach for almost 18 years, um, so I, I'm very familiar with kind of the issues that you have, and I'm happy to help you as the interim, uh, city attorney. Do we have somebody to come?
Andrew, I just want to thank you. Thank you already for letting us saw you tonight, but I mean, I think I can speak on behalf of the whole council and all of our citizens. This was a unforeseen tragic circumstance here, and I'm just so glad that you're able to do this on short notice. Um, you have, for the folks who don't know Andrew, he has an incredible background, um, so, uh, you're going to do just fine over here, and really appreciate it, and thank you that you're here for us. Thank you. Council, any comments?
Very impressive resume. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now, city manager?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, I put, uh, you, under, uh, tab six, you've got the, uh, what is the first month of our kind of paper report that we started, uh, just highlighting it, uh, the drainage project. We're in the final, uh, design review for 12th and 13th Street. Uh, the audiovisual, uh, changeout started today. Uh, that's why you see all these lists and stuff floating around, city hall. Uh, so they've started that project. It'll get done, uh, during the month of February. Uh, we received the designs back, uh, for 16th City Hall and 7th Street and the boat ramp. Uh, there were a couple things that the, uh, engineer missed on the boat ramp, so we sent that back to him to update that and get it corrected. Uh, we submitted a hazard mitigation grant that's not on here for the generator. Uh, we asked for 180,000, a few hundred and forty we expect. Pinellas County, we ranked eight out of 12 projects, but we, hopefully, we'll get some Tier Two funding, so that could help us out with the generator and not cost you so much. Uh, the kind of, uh, the sign, I've heard so much about it, and there's been a lot of misrepresented prices and this, that, and floated around, while I'm happy to tell you that the city actually only spent $1,000 for the sign. We got $34,000 back from the insurance. Uh, we had a discussion, uh, with the adjuster, and he's already paid us, we were paid, uh, 30, 30,289 dollars and 30 cents, uh, and then we got 4,040 dollars previously. So the sign ended up costing us $1,000. Uh, our insurance covered it, and our deductible was a thousand, so it, it worked out great for the city.
I, I'm just going to interrupt you for a second. I don't know what you did or what you said to him, but that's absolutely outstanding. I mean, we were talking about getting 5,000 or 10,000 back, basically, so I can pay for almost the whole thing. Excellent. Whatever you did, excellent.
He negotiated it.
Well, he negotiated well, so.
Yes. Good point.
And I will say, we've had a lot of positive, uh, comments about the sign, and I think we toned the lighting down. I hope, uh, to most of the residents satisfactory, and, uh, so, actually, another city has contacted me to ask me about our sign, so, but, that's where we're at with the sign.
Has our insurance premiums gone up since we had an insurance adjuster go after that money?
Uh, it may go up minorly, but it's going to go up, I mean, we have lawsuits and things like that. It's going to go up there too, so it's, it's negligible, I think, in the scheme of things.
I'm just saying, I mean, my experience is when you get the insurance adjustments in there, yeah, you do get the windfall when you pay it back over years. They're not in business.
Well, not, not at this point, but we haven't had any claims for years either, so that's a positive for the city. They don't pay claims for years. So, and that's all I have.
Council, any questions? Now, with Frank.
On the 7th Street boat ramp, um, you said they had to go back out for, um, there was an engineering problem, they missed some stuff. Is everybody, the total project with the dock put back in with that boat ramp, was that going to be bid separately?
That's done separately. There, there's, we've got funding in the budget for a new dock. The boat ramp and the seawall are separate, and, uh, the, really, the issue was he didn't extend it far enough out to water because he, uh, didn't realize it went as far out as, as we know it goes.
Can we not do a combined bid on that?
It's really two different, really two, two different types of contractors, and I think we'd be better served if we went to a dock person specifically and go to a seawall specifically. I think it would save us money in the big picture.
Then just, on that same topic, does the person who's designing the ramp need to know what we ultimately desire for the dock so that it's coordinated? You don't want to build the concrete ramp and do the changes and then find out, you know, oops, we could have done such and such and made it better, or better designed?
Well, the, the dock, dock person, really, the seawall's going to be, uh, refiled in the front, new cap, and the, the, uh, boat ramp, where it's at now, it's going to stay. We're just asking them to take all the broken concrete out and put a new ramp in. So the dock design actually shouldn't happen until after that's finished, to make sure that, you know, it's set out far enough, because it is going to go between 12 and 18 inches further out than it is currently because of the seawall replacement.
Do you have any target dates for both projects at this point?
Well, we're, as I said on the report, we're going to get the bid out in the first part of March, uh, for the seawall, and, and shortly after that, we, we could go, go ahead and talk to the dock builders at the same time, so I don't, I don't think it's going to delay much over April or May at the latest.
I think that was your original estimate, wasn't it?
Yeah.
What?
I've been getting, uh, feedback from residents about political signs appearing on county property. City manager?
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple, and, uh, what they're talking about is, uh, the signs on the Stormwater Pond across the street. Our ordinance does state that any sign, it doesn't matter what it is, political, temporary, or permanent, uh, is not to be placed on public property. So, you know, I guess what I would ask is the candidates that have them there to stay within the code, and just put them on private property. That's, that's, you know, that, that's in the code that says any sign, and I, I don't want to pick up signs. I'd just rather ask anyone that's got a sign to, to put them on private property.
You have?
Uh, yes, uh, great job on the sign. I'm blown away. I can't believe we got that sign for a brand. Great job. Thank you very much.
Who else? Citizens, we have any comments? Okay, Lynn, thank you. Any change to a city clerk report, item seven?
Well, once again, my projects are not as exciting as the city managers', but, um, right now, I'm working on the municipal election documents, scanning them and converting them and filing them digitally, and then going through, uh, our, our last, uh, ordinances that were passed by council and, uh, codifying them to include them in the code. And as far as public records, um, at the time of this report, I just have one outstanding, and that's my report.
Council? Citizens? I do thank you, and I'll echo what Deborah Mall said in terms of the election. I know, you know, it comes around, but there's a lot of extra work associated with it, and you seem to knock it out as fast as it comes in, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have the consent agenda. We have items eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 on our regional. We'll, um, make a motion in the second, and we'll pass it all as one unit. There will not be any discussion, there will not be any citizen comments on it because it's a consent agenda. So item eight is approval of January 3rd, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Item nine is approval of January 18th, 2022 city council work session minutes. Item 10, approval of city attorney monthly invoice for legal services. Item 11, city council acceptance of, uh, city attorney Fred Riley's resignation. And item 12, authorize city manager to advertise for legal services for the city attorney. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Yes. Second?
Second.
Second by Glenn Gunn. Again, there's no discussion on this, so at this point...
Yeah, January 13th, here's the error. Page three.
Okay, so, procedure, we would have been to take this out of the consent agenda, we could have moved it back, removed the agenda. Um, can I ask what the error is?
Got Frank Banker voting twice.
Patty, let me ask you this. I, I, I don't want to have inaccurate minutes. Can we correct that after the fact if we approve this?
As you said, I can't hear Councilmember Baker very well, so, page three?
Page three, he's, he has him voting twice on an issue.
Oh, okay, yes. I'll fix that.
So just personally, you can correct that on the, after we approve this?
Okay, and, yes, I will.
Does anyone on council have an objection to that correction? So if our minutes are accurate?
I'd like clarification on which way you voted.
Which, Frank, January 3rd, page three, they had, tell us exactly the wrong issue.
We've motioned to table for discussion of a resolution at the next city council work session, and are you opposed to it?
I remember that you did do that, but Patty, you'll double check it, of course.
Yes, I will.
So with that correction, does anybody have an objection as corrected? Okay, so then we're going to have item eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. Item eight will be corrected, as, as you just said, Councilmember Frank Banker is... I, I, I don't wanna have inaccurate minutes. Can we correct that after the fact if we approve this?
As you said, I can't hear Councilmember Bankard very well, so page three?
Page three, he has him voting twice on an issue.
Oh, okay, yes.
So just to stress personally, you can correct that on the, after we approve this?
Okay, and yes, I will.
Does anyone on council have an objection to that correction? So the minutes are accurate?
I'd like clarification on which way you voted.
Which, Frank, January third, page three, they had, tell us exactly the wrong issue.
It was motion to table for discussion and a resolution at the next city council work session, and I opposed it.
I remember that you did do that, but Patty, you'll double check it, of course.
Yes, I will.
So with that correction, does anybody have an objection as corrected? Okay, so then we're gonna have item eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Item eight will be corrected, as, as you just said. Councilmember Frank Bankard is presently shown on page three in favor of the motion to table. He should be opposed. Patty Gentry will double check this back to the original tapes. And if Frank is correct, which I believe he is, we'll make that correction then with our approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then all in favor? All right, aye? Does anyone oppose? Six to zero, consent agenda passes. Would that one change? Okay, we move to the regular agenda. Item thirteen, to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for interim legal services for the city attorney. So Mr. Solzman here will be able to continue and be paid, which I think is kind of important. He's nodding, yeah. We got a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Frank Bankard, second?
Second.
Second by Dave Gaddis. Frank, you have the fourth.
Speaks for himself, a native attorney. Comes with a high qualified resume.
He absolutely comes with a qualified, highly qualified resume, so yes. Anyone else on council? Citizens, any comments? Back to council, and Frank, you'll get the last word. Okay, so what we have on the table right now is to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for interim legal services for the city attorney, from Mr. Solzman here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone oppose? Six to zero. I'll sign that this evening before we leave. Item fourteen is unfinished business. Is there any? Hearing none. Move to city council comments. It's the even month, so we can handle it without a vote.
I don't have any comments. Sorry.
No comments. Frank Bankard?
Just to compliment Patty, as a citizen did, you do an excellent job. You're underpaid, in my view, but.
Thank you.
We were blessed to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Frank. Glenn Dunn?
Just to recap on the significance of this electronic sign. Our old monument sign blows down. We gotta replace it. There's a lot of recommendations on how to do this thing. The communications committee gives a recommendation. We go up for a bid, and we get a bid back for fifty-five thousand dollars. And although all of the council members unanimously like the product, we all believe that it's priced a little too high. So we send it back to the drawing board, and we get a scaled-down version for thirty-five thousand dollars. Never sixty-five thousand, as information has it out on the street. Never was that number ever considered, sixty-five thousand. The bid comes back with, for thirty-five thousand, with essentially all of the elements that we liked on the original sign. At the time that we were discussing the new price, the thirty-five thousand dollar product, we're getting some initial feedback from the insurance companies that we might get somewhere between eleven to fourteen thousand dollars for the sign that blew down. And while we go through the throes of trying to decide whether or not we want an electronic sign, we receive an insurance check for four thousand dollars. And later on, as this electronic sign debacle progresses, we begin to think that we may not get any more than four thousand dollars. Well, we send back our city manager to renegotiate that insurance thing. And he comes back with an additional thirty thousand dollars on this electronic sign. The city ends up paying one thousand dollars for a state-of-the-art technology and a aesthetically pleasing sign that basically we've got other cities asking us about right now. And basically falls into the vision that this council had the vision, the wisdom, and the courage to move forward. So I would like to not only express my couriers to, couriers to city manager Lynn Reeves, but all the council members who had the courage and wisdom to move forward on this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Listening to Tara?
No comments.
Thank you, Dave Gaddis.
Okay, now I've, I've got something to pass out everyone, just so that you can read along with it. I included a letter that was sent off to a senator and a representative and was carbon copied to other elected officials in our state asking that, that they create a bill that, in my opinion, is pretty much an encroachment on our home rule. I don't want to blast anyone for trying or anything like that, but the purpose of this is just to make everyone aware that we need to be careful about what we're asking for. So I'm just gonna read this to you, and I've given everyone here a copy. Home rule is the authority of the local government to prevent state government intervention with its operations. And with the caution, all members of this council, you carefully consider the possible repercussions of any request for new state regulations. Before asking for state intervention, please ask yourself the following. Will this regulation have an impact on our home rule? Will this regulation affect our city today? Could there be a circumstance in the future where we would no longer want this type of regulation? If created in past, this particular request would impact our home rule. Further, it could plant the seeds for heavier regulation than the author originally intended. Everyone in this room has the freedom to make these requests. Before considering state regulation, I ask that each of you consider every possible outcome, not just what you intended. You may get way more than expected. Please do whatever you can to protect our home rule. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Dave. So I'm gonna, I didn't have any comments, but after that comment, I'm gonna actually say something and add to it because I think it's important that you understand the full idea behind home rule. Home rule is local government making the rules for its locality. There's generally the thought that people up here are in the best position to make the best choices for Baller Beach because you elected us, we represent you. You don't want someone from Tallahassee doing that. With that said, we're under assault from Tallahassee. I previously spoken about Tallahassee's trying to ram down short-term rentals down our throat. We don't want them, but there's representatives every year that are doing it right now, trying to ram that stuff down. So when, I didn't, I'm not the person who reached out, but I will say that the person who reached out, reached out over the issue of shade on the beach. Now, home rule's a great thing when it's exercised properly, but when it's abused, then Tallahassee steps in and takes away your ability to regulate yourself. And you're gonna trample someone's constitutional right and medical right to make a decision as to whether they protect themselves from skin cancer, then yes, you're going to get Tallahassee involvement. Frank Bankard, you're the person who did this, by the way.
I'm trying to comment on it.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll see if we can give the count. It's only six-thirty. I'll see if the council will open this up to a little discussion here. But Frank Bankard did it, and I want you to know that three months before that, June Van Scoey did it. She lobbed me nifty sickly. Didn't get anywhere with it. Maybe if it was short-term rentals, he would've done something for us. But we tried, folks, okay? If you're gonna abuse your power, your power will be taken away. So home rule is not to be protected at all costs. It's to be used and used wisely. And so that's what Mr. Bankard did. That's what June Van Scoey did. It's part of your right to lobby your elected representatives. Right now, it's legislative week up in Tallahassee. The Sun Coast League of Cities, which I'm a member, sends a group every year to lobby the legislators for all the points of interest that we have. So unfortunately, this didn't make the cut for bills this year, but it'll be tried again and again and again because no one in Florida should ever be forced to suffer in the sun without protection. It's your choice. You make the call, not some guy sitting in a five-million-dollar mansion. With that, my comments conclude. However, Frank, I understand you might wanna speak. It's up to the council. We're gonna have to dispense with the rules. It's only eight-forty. I have no problem having a brief discussion if you wanna revote this, but if they don't give us the okay, then this meeting is gonna come to an end. So we wish to dispense with the rule and have a brief discussion here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I got two in favor, three in favor. Anybody who's against?
No, I'm against.
One, two? I have two against. How many are four? Two? You're four.
Four discussion.
Four discussion, yeah. Frank, you're in four. And Dan Lesman, you break the tie.
Four.
Four, okay, we have four votes. Frank Bankard, you have the floor. And we're gonna keep this brief, okay?
Yeah, I received a, two, a state senator, state rep is trying to get a bill passed for cigarette. They, I'm gonna try to paraphrase this as quick as I can. There are concern about a lot of cigarette butts that are on the beach. They're considering cigarette butts are one of the most hazardous or bacteria, trash items that are on the beach. So you have a senator and a state rep that's very concerned about people's safety, kids picking up cigarette butts. So I wrote to them, I said, hey, I think it's a great idea. And I got this, I got the email to my city account, all right? So I wrote back and I said, right now, we're being under attack because we can't put up shade. And I consider Florida one of the highest probability for skin cancers that you can get because we are the sun giant state. So I said, why don't we look at creating a bill that would prohibit towns from prohibiting putting up a beach umbrella on the sand? Now, I am rarely sorry, Mr. Gaddis, and I offended you by doing that, all right? But you're the guy that promoted a resolution after people stood there and cried.
Point of order. This is a personal attack. Frank, I'm gonna find that somewhat well-founded, so.
Okay, well, I'll just say, well, there was a councilman.
Frank, hang on a second. Just address it in general, not directly to Dave Gaddis.
One of our councilmen presented a resolution, okay? Then when women were up here almost crying for help, okay? And we said, no, we don't wanna get involved in a lawsuit, okay? That would protect yourselves, your kids, your grandkids, all right? And we probably would've had this whole shade thing resolved by now. But this council didn't. This council decided to promote a sign, okay? Whoa, great, we look like a car wash outfit. But when it came to your safety and your health, all right, they voted down. That's why I was.
You know, it's funny we talk about this. I, I just have, as I'm looking over to Frank to talk to him about point of order, I don't know if you can get this, Victor. This is the cover of our book. It's taken from our city services. It's from our city website. Umbrellas, they're legal in Baller Beach, folks. We protect you here, but some people don't do that. So if that means you lose your home rule, rule power, then it means that. And if we can succeed the legislative way, that's fine. We're gonna try and succeed the legal way because people don't want to talk. They've had five opportunities. They can talk to me anytime they want. They've got my personal cell phone, so they can call, but they don't. We've almost had a solution in the summer. Two of our residents tanked that. Our residents tanked it by putting up signs all over the city. They ruined it for you. You would probably have this settled last summer. We're moving forward. Debpositions start next, twenty-first. Fly the city. City council, any other comments? Anyone want to be heard? Okay. What about Dad, brother?
Can you hear me?
Yes, not loud.
I guess I don't understand the point of this. What was the point of bringing this up? I think Bankard emailing our elected officials with the concern is valid. I don't see this doing anything home rule. This isn't talking about sign ordinances, isn't talking about other legal lingo jingo. This is talking about a health crisis and being a physician, being a surgeon who has done wide local excisions and removed big chunks of people, muscle tissue bone from melanoma. I can certainly be in support of shade because like it says in his email, children, my children's age right now, having too much sun exposure, they will be almost guaranteed to have skin cancer by the time they're young adults. So I don't really see this as sufficient, justifiable something to bring up at a meeting. I don't know if you're just trying to make yourself look good. I don't know what this is. I don't understand part of this. So I applaud you for trying to bring up a health crisis that could be happening on our shores. And yeah, I think this, I don't understand it.
I don't think I heard it.
Okay.
Yeah, this is going exactly where I figured it would go. But nobody is arguing the health benefits of this thing. Doctor Google? Nobody has ever argued this thing.
I'm a freaking doctor.
No, yes, I mean, I'm.
Glenn, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it whatever.
That was rude.
Yeah.
Point taken, point taken. Yep.
I'm in the quarter and the flight.
No, you can call me Captain, I get what you're saying. The point is taken, but nobody has ever argued the health positives or negatives of this aspect. It has always been an issue about how best to address it and who is best at addressing it and how we go about addressing it. And, you know, we started down one path as a consensus of the council, which was directing our city manager to negotiate. And where we hooked that before tonight? Who came back negotiating the digital sign and walked away with us sitting up in the plus column? It's always been about how we do it, how's the best way to do this? It's never been about who's, who's against skin cans or who's for skin cans. It's never been that way. So why try to make it an issue that way? It's always been about what's the best way to solve this problem.
But the, but the email was about kids, people getting skin cancer. It's a pretty known fact, five bad sunburns.
I think.
I'm not putting on a team to merit this.
Frank, finish that. Yeah.
And, and that's what I'm saying. And look, I have a lot of respect for our city manager. I think he does a great job. But he did say an insurance adjuster got involved, okay, to get us to thirty-five grand. Everybody of yous go home tonight, okay, and try to get your homeowner's insurance that nobody wants to write policies down in their home because the insurance adjusters have ruined this state by replacing roofs that don't need them, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's why our insurance rates have gone through the roof. And I believe our insurance would be increased because of that. So.
So I wanna address something Glenn Dunn said. Negotiation's wonderful. I do it all the time. It takes two people to negotiate. And when you send a team of people, not just the city manager, you yourself went virtually across the street along with me, along with Jody Shirley. We all spoke on our individual topics and spoke very nicely. There's Kobeus notes in the minutes of Baller Shore for July twenty-first, twenty-twenty. It's online, you can go read it, and it was a very accurate transcription. And when we got done with that, they not only voted to uphold the law of banning our umbrellas, they said, and I'll quote, Councilmember Steve Bloom said, they wanted to talk with Baller Beach, and he said, well, I'll listen, but I'm not changing my mind. I have the tape, folks, okay? Now, on top of that, okay, the council did send the city manager over, and perhaps you forgot the memo that I read into the record, how the city manager went one week earlier and said he was going to help Baller Shore. Said that they could make laws right up to the water, which is legally incorrect. And called the people who were complaining about it rabble-rousers. That was not written by us, folks. That was written by their city clerk to their mayor, and they had no idea that it would ever be discovered in litigation. That is not negotiating for us. That is negotiating. That is not negotiating for us, that is negotiating against us. Baller Shore was given by me, and I'm looking at Deborah Mall and Rick Shock, each of us sent letters, they had upwards of a, well, a month, but they actually had two months to come back amicably and do something about this ordinance. They did nothing. Then, on September 28th, I sued them, and they still have done nothing. So what you may have heard, there were standoffs, there's no standoff. I've got an expert report that just says what Robin Aki just said about the dangers of skin cancer. They produce no expert. We go to depositions at the end of the month, and this case is moving forward to trial. I'm gonna get me your umbrellas back, okay? They can negotiate anytime they want, they can negotiate with anyone they want. Negotiations in a lawsuit are privileged, you can't use them as evidence in court of law, so the law encourages negotiation. I've, I've tried five times. I'm not gonna keep asking them, the next move is theirs if they want to negotiate. But I am moving forward, and the case is headed right now right where I want it to be going. If they want to change their minds, change it. It's not just about umbrellas, by the way, folks. It's about bicycles on the beach, it's about parking lot abuse, it's about food on the beach, it's about breach of fiduciary duty. This is no longer one issue. They were warned, if we went in, we go in on all the issues we have. It's literally a 12 or 13-count lawsuit, not one count. It's not just umbrellas anymore. And there's two years' worth of damages for 43 people, soon to be 45 people. So I'm gonna say. Anyone else?
I have a floor to tell...
I'm sorry.
My mistake. The, the whole point of the letter was to warn everyone, be careful of what you ask for. It doesn't matter what you ask for, it's about the way that you go about doing it and what the outcomes are. It has nothing to do with your lawsuit, has nothing to do with skin cancer, has nothing to do with Frank Banker's intentions. So what it is about, what it is about is about...
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Sure.
Point of order, okay? So, like I told Frank, let's direct it, it's fine, not individually, can you take it?
Not a personal attack, it's just stating a fact. Anyway, the whole point is, is that we're worried about home rule, and every time that a letter is fired off to Congress, we, we, something could be changed, because you're mad at another town, and the outcome may not only be smacking us, but every city in the state of Florida. And that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking you to stop and think about before you get on your keyboard and start sending emails out to everybody asking for the state of Florida to step in and control us and everyone around us, because we do not want that. That's all I have to say.
There was no place in my email asking the state to control everything. My, the thing was, if the state's concerned about cigarette butts, which I'm not saying it shouldn't be, all right, why aren't, why doesn't the state get involved with people, kids, the elderly, myself, my grandkids, okay, being exposed to the harmful rays of the sun by a town that we can't control in our home rule, okay, establishing or not establishing beach umbrellas? And that's all I was saying. This council did not do its job by protecting the citizens from 20th Street South, all right? I'm saying all of people, Robin, Ford, you, Mayor, I told you.
Thank you, we applaud you, Rob. Any other comments? I know it's funny, right? Glenn, skin cancer is a funny topic. Maybe you can come to me...
It had nothing to do with the... Point of order.
No.
Point of order. You're not a champion. We have to point of order.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Well, we're not doing comments, so we can't break into the comments here, we're having a discussion, but then you can make, you'll be first up to make that motion to adjourn. We're not, by the way, our, that's all, I'm gonna find your point of order valid, and I'll tell you why. Our rules say that you're not supposed to be making any noises or comments or disruptions while another person's talking. I don't believe anything I say is funny, but if skin cancer is funny to you, by all means, the, the expert, expert report was filed yesterday afternoon, and bring it, and learn how funny it really is, or maybe have a little sidebar with Rob. Any other council comments? Okay, now Leslie, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, six to zero, good night, everyone.